Good afternoon. This meeting of the Board of Education for August 4, 2014 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. And replays of today's meeting will not be available on Channel 28 until August 12, when it will be posted on TV services website School Board Video Archive. Coach Chair Atkins is joining us on the phone and Student Representative Joswell is absent today. This board meeting was rescheduled in order to accommodate the vacation schedules of several board members and to ensure that we were able to have all voices at this meeting, even if Director Atkins is only able to join us by telephone. We completed and approved the superintendent's evaluation in May. Our agenda day is the superintendent's contract, which we approve on an annual basis. So at this time, we'll have public comment. Ms. Houston, I know we have people signed up.
We have three. Our first two speakers, Donna Cohen and Dave Porter.
Okay. While you're both coming up, I'll go ahead and read the instructions for public comment. Thank you very much for taking the time to come to our board meeting. We deeply value public input and we look forward to hearing your thoughts and reflections and concerns. Our responsibility as a board lies in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration when referring to board members, staff, and other presenters. The board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but the board or staff will follow up on various issues that are raised. Please make sure that you've left your contact information, either a phone or an email, on the sign-up sheet with Ms. Houston. Pursuant to Board Policy 1.70.012, speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning individual district personnel. Any complaints about specific employees should be directed to the superintendent's office. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name. During the first two minutes of testimony, you'll see a green light there in front of you. When you have one minute remaining, the yellow light will come on and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer sounds, and we ask that you wrap up your comments at that time. Again, we sincerely appreciate you being here today and giving us your input, and thank you very much for your cooperation. So either of you can go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name's Dave Porter, P-O-R-T-E-R. Chair Noel, Superintendent Smith, members of the board, members of the public. This afternoon, I wish to speak about the need for a second Japanese dual-language immersion program in PPS. The board should instruct PPS administration to develop a proposal for board consideration as to when to open and where to locate such a new Japanese immersion program. First, there is now sufficient parental interest and lottery demand for an additional Japanese immersion program. Here is the data from the last four years of the PPS transfer lottery. Current, last year is not yet available. Note the bottom line. Over the four year, school years, 2010 to 2014, 246 applicants met the criteria for admission, probably including attending an orientation meeting, but were either wait-listed or denied no space. PPS failed each of those 246 applicants. Their parents wanted them to learn Japanese and PPS let them down. They lost their best, perhaps only, opportunity to become bilingual in Japanese. PPS cares a lot about community and parent rental engagement. Let me suggest that parents are rarely more engaged than when they make a kindergarten or pre-K selection for their child. They are often required to make school visits and school meetings and to fill out applications. Their preferences, as reflected in the lottery, should be given substantial weight in the development of PPS programs. Richmond admits most of its students at both pre-K and kindergarten level. In 2013-14, the Richmond Japanese immersion program had 113 students in its kindergarten. I assume 51 of the 52 students admitted to the pre-kindergarten program in 2012-13, the prior year, carried over into kindergarten and rejoined by 62 selected in the 2013-14 lottery to yield the 113 kindergartens. I do not know how many of these were siblings. Note that 112 kindergarten students can be distributed into four classes of 28 each. The last three years had enough students each turned away each year, 56 or more, to fill two additional Japanese immersion classrooms. Those are the points I wanted to make. There's more data in the written material on the aspects of the Richmond program. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Donna Cohen, C-O-H-E-N. I'm going to refer to a couple of PPS documents. I'll give you the references afterwards. Going to read something first. Minimum standards for dedicated spaces. Requirement number one, each neighborhood high school will have sufficient dedicated space to accommodate the following core electives: 3D CAD Design Lab, wood and metal manufacturing, robotics, and STEM. These spaces will be located in close proximity to enhance the interdisciplinary and iterative nature of hands-on, project-based learning. And this is, of course, what we've been asking for. You're telling us now that our two STEM spaces, one that's almost 2,500 feet, one that's almost 3,500 feet, are now going to be equipped with everything that was in both of the spaces, which is clearly impossible. Had even one of the spaces, had the larger space, been able to fit all of that equipment, we would never have had a problem and I wouldn't be here now. So that solution is not a solution. From the PPS ed specs, pages 36 and 37, the requirements, square footage for CTE space requirements and STEM space requirements, clearly, when you look at them, the square footage that has been allotted to Roosevelt combined, between 5,500 and 6,000, is inadequate according to your own ed specs. In other words, everything we've been asking for is already in your own guidelines. We're asking you to fulfill your guidelines. And I've added here information about a 300-page dissertation done by a graduate student in technology education, which is totally focused on tech ed facilities in terms of size, in terms of equipment. It's very helpful. It was partly done to help architects. You guys need to resolve this according to what the community has said and your own guidelines. More and more people in the community are upset about this. We are not going away until this is fixed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have Dominic LeFave.
My name is Dominic LeFave, L-E-F-A-V-E, and I'm a special education teacher at Wilson High School. And I'm just between summer conferences and doing a bunch of professional development and I'm kind of a little bit annoyed that I have to, I feel like I have to come here today. I'm going to talk about special ed, but really what motivates me to come here is the prospect of giving a huge raise to the superintendent. We need to put that money into our schools, directly into our classrooms. I work in special education and I've seen our, I'm just going to give you a couple of examples in case you're out of ideas. Our motor team's been gutted. This is our motor team, works with special education students, that's APE teachers, physical therapists, occupational therapists. They do a fantastic job. They've been stretched beyond their limits. They cannot handle the amount of kids that they are supposedly working with, which means they're not doing their jobs. And frankly, I just think it's horribly irresponsible for you to, you know, brandish this enormous, you know, raise for the superintendent when our schools are in this shape. We need more par educators. We need more special education teachers. I've watched the caseloads of Learning Center teachers just skyrocket. They've become IEP mills. They're not working with the kids the way they're supposed to, the way they're mandated by federal law to do. You need to fix this and you need to act responsibly. And I have just gotten to the point where it feels like I don't trust you to be responsible with this stuff. So I've come down here. I really don't want to be here. But we need to put these resources into our classrooms. Please be responsible and consider this. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay. At this time, we're going to go ahead and talk about the, or review the superintendent contract, contract accept extension. On May 19, the board adopted the superintendent's performance appraisal, and since that time, we've been in negotiation with the superintendent regarding salary and benefits. We've not had such a discussion since the superintendent joined the district seven years ago, because while we were in recession and experiencing severe cuts to our budget, the superintendent refused to accept any raise. In fact, because of furlough days, her salary decreased in years, the staff took furloughs. Today, the board will vote on superintendent's contract extension. Not all board members are in agreement with the package that we have negotiated, and all board members will have an opportunity to speak about why they do or do not agree. Before we get to that, I want to share with the public what we considered during the contract negotiations. So we have a PowerPoint for that. As you all know, Superintendent Smith has led the Porton Public Schools for the past seven years, and during that time, there have been significant achievements that indicate the district is moving in a positive direction. We're not all the way there. We know that as a board, but we are making positive moves. So I'm going to go through a few of those today. We have a 14 percentage point gain in high school graduation rate from 53% to 67%. The graduation rate in our comprehensive and focus option high schools is 80%. And the achievement gap between white students and students of color is narrowing at key milestones. The graduation gap between white students and Latino students has narrowed by nine percentage points, as an example. We've been growing the internal leadership capacity within the district's administrative offices. We've developed a racial educational equity policy that has been developed and implemented, differentiating resources for students with fewer supports, and I might add, is a nationally recognized equity policy that is copied by districts across the country. The superintendent led contract negotiations with the PAT that, among other things, resulted in more school days for students and provisions that allowed the district to hire sooner and ensure that we have the best teacher in front of our students. I know that our human resources people are across the country looking for new teachers for us, early. We passed a $482 million bond with successful completion of the first round of construction and improvement projects last summer, and we have 12 more projects this summer, and we're moving ahead with both Roosevelt and Franklin and their redesign. With the passage of a local option levy that provided more funding for our schools during a recession that eliminated $40 million in the district budget affecting our efforts to educate children. We've had operational cost savings of over $3 million that are redirected into educational services, for example, our boiler burners. And despite significant budget reductions, and years of the district, educational milestones have continued to be met. Among large and medium-sized school districts, PPS has the second smallest elementary class size in the metro area. We strengthen partnerships throughout the district, state, and county. For example, the superintendent participates in Cradle to Career, a consortium of city, county business, community nonprofits, and higher ed partnerships with Multnomah districts focused on educational milestones. And we have one of the longest school years of any of the large districts. So our rationale for salary increase and a benefit adjustment was based on these achievements, in other words, performance and market indicators. So the market indicators that we reviewed showed us that the average superintendent tenure amongst Council of Great City School districts is three years. Superintendent Smith has been with us for seven. National comparisons of urban school districts with similar student populations show the superintendent has the longest tenure of the seven years, more than double this CGCS average. Many of the district's accomplishments are the result of her steady, long-term leadership. The Council of Great City Schools' average superintendent salary is $243,000, with over 50% of the superintendent's earning $250,000 and above. Again, the council's average salary for a tenure of five years or more is $247,000. The Council of Great City Schools survey notes that the average benefit package for urban superintendents is approximately $58,000. Superintendent Smith's proposed benefit package is $50,566, which includes a $2,500 monthly It's important for us that Superintendent Smith's contract be transparent with no hidden benefits that increase the compensation. What you see in the contract is what you get. This is not necessarily true with other superintendent contracts across the nation or even in our region. For example, other contracts include payment of the employee's PERS contribution, which we don't do in Portland Public Schools. Access to a car or travel car expenses, additional vacation that can then be bought out, and moving expenses. There are other benefits included in other contracts as well. This contract has none of these. For example, the superintendent pays her 6% PERS contribution, which under this contract would be about $14,820, making her adjusted salary compared to the districts that do pay PERS, 232,180. So this is a national comparison of where our superintendent is in comparison to other districts across the country. You can see that it's just about, we're just about in the middle. I think it's below the median. The districts on there, if you can't read them in the audience, are Anchorage, Minneapolis, PPS, where the superintendent is currently, Indianapolis, St. Paul, Wichita, Kansas, Columbus, Ohio, the proposed number, Boston, Omaha, Nebraska, Norfolk, Virginia, Seattle, Washington, Oakland, California, Capistrano, California, Santa Ana, and Atlanta, Georgia. We also used Seattle as one of our comparisons, and the superintendent there was making $269,999. And when I went to check to see how long he had been in the Seattle district, I clicked on the webpage to discover that he had written a note to the public that he was leaving for Sacramento, California, to be the superintendent there where he's going to make $290,000. And this is the superintendent's salary if she had received the same kinds of increases that PAT received, including steps and colas, average steps and colas across the years that she has been with the district. So we're looking at the 2014-2015 year is $256,853. So this is the proposed contract. It's a salary of $247,000, below the national median. A monthly annuity of $2,500, which still results in her benefits being below the average of superintendents. Benefits consistent with other PPS administrators, no special deals for the superintendent, and she'll continue to pick up her 6% PERS like the rest of our employees. So the rationale of salary and benefit adjustments were achievements, the superintendent's performance, and market indicators where we use similar demographics and time in the I'm confident in our convictions about the accomplishments of our superintendent, the benefits to our students of maintaining strong competitive school district, and in the in-depth analysis of superintendent's compensation at comparable schools. I believe that these adjustments acknowledge superintendent's leadership over the past seven years, honor her tenacity in continuing to work for the betterment of students through tough budget times, and support our vision in Portland Public Schools that all children can achieve. So that's what we went through when we were trying to determine how to compensate our superintendent. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and ask that we have a motion and a second, and then we'll have board discussion. We'll now consider Resolution 4949, Extension of Employment Contract with Carol Smith, Superintendent of Portland Public Schools, to have a motion and a second.
Some move. Second.
Director Morton moves, and Director Belial seconds the adoption of the Resolution 4949. Ms. Houston, is there public comment?
Yes, we have six. Our first two speakers, Kim Stockstad and Greg Burrow.
Um, I want to start off by apologizing for my nervousness. I'm not used to speaking in front of grownups. I'm, as a classroom teacher, I'm more used to eight-year-olds. My name's Kim Stockstad, S-T-O-C-K-S-T-A-D, and I'm a second grade teacher at Dunaway Elementary in southeast Portland. During this afternoon meeting, during a district summer break, I'm here to speak about the unwise vote today to give our superintendent a double-digit raise. To be honest, when I heard that suggestion while watching a meeting from home this spring, I let out a yelp so loud, my dogs jumped off my lap and gave me a dirty look. A raise in itself is not what I and most of the Portland community are objecting to, but it's the amount that is so grossly offensive. Many of my colleagues are topped out on the salary schedule with 13-plus years teaching, a master's degree, and 45 or more additional graduate credits. They have only received a total of 4% cost of living from the '08-'09 to the '12-'13 school years. Yes, a step was added in the '12-'13 school year, but to save teachers and avoid furlough days, teachers voted to give up half of that step, again going above and beyond the call of our jobs to the benefit of our students by keeping class sizes and kids in school. In my case, I'm only three years and 25 credits away from hitting this limit. I am 35. I live in a classically old apartment in inner southeast, yet to help make ends meet, I have a roommate. I love my roommate. She's wonderful. But still, it's terrifying to know that my district's salary here as a teacher with over a decade of experience, plus continuing graduate-level education to keep my knowledge and skills up to date, will leave me not being able to afford my home, let alone afford to purchase a house in my area that was just added to a top-10 list of up-and-coming neighborhoods in the nation. These are my thoughts when I read the Oregonian article quoting the current salary of Carol Smith, $193,000, the proposed increase of 33%, to increase of 66% to her annuity, and all of that makes me sick to my stomach. I am sick thinking about all of the teachers currently topped out, the ones who are reached very quickly like me, and I wonder, as a school board, do you even understand what it's like to be in our position? Do you understand what it's like to be 35, to have to live with a roommate, to afford your modest apartment? Do you understand what it's like for teachers who are single parents trying to pay for school supplies, extracurricular activities, and family outings? Do you understand how difficult it is for teachers trying to put their kids through college? Do you understand what it's like for teachers trying to take care of ailing family members? This is our reality. I'm not even going to bring up the amount of money we put into our classrooms and students on a yearly basis. So imagine what a double-digit salary increase sounds like to us who are working in the schools and to the public. I understand that Carol's salary has risen only $3,000 in seven years, but an increase of 20 to 30%, it would make more sense in this day and age to give the superintendent the same rate of salary increase as other district employees. That would demonstrate you understand how district employees are in this together. Give the superintendent the same modest increase you give to your employees with the training and trust to actually work directly with students each and every day. Thank you.
Mr. Burrell, do you want to, I think you're next on the list?
Mr. Belial would also like to continue to extend the invitation to come to my classroom, room 10, anytime. Let's talk.
Good afternoon. I feel like I'm in a movie. Greg Burrow, B-U-R-R-I-L-L, and I wanted to take the opportunity to say as much positive as I can, because I know you have a really difficult job, Superintendent Smith, and I've worked really hard to understand what it is that all of you board members do. And I thought it was really important that I have my voice heard. And what I want to say is, I think I didn't hear what the other people said, but I think what makes the most sense and feels the most fair is that Superintendent Smith get a modest salary increase, much as teachers have gotten. In fact, most teachers have suffered a decrease in their annual salary, and that's not even considering additional workload issues. But I want to take this moment again to say that big things are going on in the district, and I think it's really important that we figure out the, there are thorny truths and things going on with boundary reassessment and enrollment and transfer. And I love coming to the board when I think I know what you should do. I don't know what you should do about all these issues. I'm learning right along with you. But I wanted to make sure that I went on record saying that I support Superintendent Smith and I support a modest salary increase, because I know it is a high-pressure job and a difficult job. And what I would ask in return, I have heard lots of commentary here on the board about developing better and new relationships with the community, better and new relationships with teachers, and to do something about the way administration is growing compared to the way teachers, teacher cadre is growing. So in other words, we want more teachers and less people in the central office. So thank you so much for giving me your ear.
Lisa Zuniga, Z-U-N-I-G-A, a parent of a Franklin senior and an incoming freshman. It's timely that you're considering today a contract extension for Superintendent Smith when the needs of high school students remain unmet. In just three weeks, our high schools will open to students and families who are under the impression that the course catalogs they reviewed last spring represented real classes. Many of these students took PPS up on the offer to attend school for the bare minimum of hours required by state law and forecasted for a full day, a decision that better prepares them for college and career by increasing their access to instruction. What I am wondering is whether these offers will fall apart come August registration, when high school staffing is shown to be inadequate. Promises to add teachers in October will ring hollow to parents and students. Last spring, during the budget process, I spoke here on behalf of the Parents Coalition, asking Superintendent Smith to follow through on her agreement with our group to create a framework and staffing plan that allowed all high school students genuine access to a full school day. Other parents repeated that request, and yet here we are, days away from year four of part-time high school, and we have incomplete forecasting data, no assurances that enough teachers were added for the comprehensive high schools to offer students access to the bare minimum, and little to no follow-through on the superintendent's May 2013 commitment to build a framework for staffing high schools sufficiently. The high school teachers that have been added are more likely to go toward reducing workload, a good thing, but not one that will allow students access to a full day of instruction. I'm here to ask you to postpone this vote and instead hold a public briefing on the status of our district's comprehensive high schools, show that PPS is in compliance with the letter and spirit of the law, and confirm high schools have been staffed to offer every student access to a full day of instruction. During the 2012 school year, only 17% of Portland students had a full day. That inched up to 30% last year. Will 2014 perpetuate the culture of early release, late arrival, non-instructional study halls, and extended lunch? The Parents Coalition has asked for forecasting and staffing information since before summer began. Only yesterday, after multiple follow-up requests, did we finally receive data, albeit incomplete. This is a red flag at best and a sign of broken commitments at worst. Given that the Department of Education chastised PPS as out of compliance, in spirit if not in practice, in terms of their legal obligations, I have to ask, where's the sense of urgency? What data is driving staffing decisions, and is there a strategy? The Parents Coalition is committed to unear- The Parents Coalition is committed to unearthing what the district fails to provide willingly. We shouldn't have to act as registration watchdogs, but we strongly suspect that PPS is not fulfilling its commitment to students. Before you vote yes on a contract extension and pay increase, ask yourself whether the unethical practice of short-
Finish up? That'd be good, just go ahead and finish up.
Thank you. Of shortchanging students has been resolved to your satisfaction. And Superintendent Smith, we would ask the same of you. To demonstrate your commitment to students, I urge you to say out loud before you vote that you're confident every high schooler in Portland has unadulterated access to a full school day, and that our high schools are currently staffed to support that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've got some time. I don't know if you're familiar with the Enron merger.
Could you give us your name and spell your last name, please?
And my address? Just name.
Your first name and last name, spell your last name?
Nancy Newell. Nancy Newell. So, uh-
Spell your last name.
I was part of the fighting the Enron merger. The Enron merger came directly into the school board, and, um, I stopped a good portion of it to save the school district money. And as we found out, there were crooks involved and working in our city that are now in jail. So, to reflect on that, I would like to say that the ethics and quality of this board, I would hope, is at a much higher standard. I understand Carol Smith's tremendous accomplishments, I would expect that that would be part of the job. Also, I respect the fact that, yes, people do get rewards for the good work that they do. However, we have people working two jobs just to reach poverty levels. We have people that are without homes, we have a record number of homeless in our city. We have conditions that exist because we're separating the poor from the rich, and there's nothing in between. In that kind of atmosphere, I ask you, what is my value? I closed two nuclear plants, including the Trojan Nuclear Plant. How many lives have I saved? I'm in the process of closing the, the plant on the Columbia River, which is a Fukushima design, which people are watching, and if we have any kind of minor earthquake, that thing will blow, and we won't even have the Northwest left, it's on the Hanford Reservation. How much do you want to pay me for that? If you're looking at values, you look at, this is a public school education, my daughter benefited from a tremendous staff, tremendous teachers, tremendous advisors, some good administration, some good school board, and she's doing very well. However, she has no pension, she has no guarantee of retirement, she has no guarantee of job security, and this is the norm for our people that we're graduating, and we're not addressing this. And I think it would be a more respectable answer to these students that have succeeded, and anybody that's going through this education, that someone like Carol Smith respects the fact that the community has to have someplace to find this money. I'm on fixed income, and I think there is a level of concern that should sit right in the classrooms today, because these kids are being deprived left and right, they're being filled with huge debts, they can't even get a start, and we're sitting here deciding on thousands of dollars on performance. I don't understand why administrators and the superintendent is not expected today. I just don't understand why there's a rollover guarantee when most of the population is just trying to get by, and this city is losing its quality of life. So, I don't want to see that enhanced by this increase. I think that Carol is terrific at her job, I compliment her highly for the accomplishments, but I disagree with the amount of the increase. Thank you.
Could you please spell your last name for us?
N.E.W.E.L.L.
Thank you very much.
Our last two speakers are Young Runan and Tom Kane.
Hi, I'm Young Nam, I'm a, um, high school teacher, a social studies teacher at Wilson High School, and I just want to first-
Could you please spell your last name?
Yeah, Nam, N-A-M.
Thank you.
And I want to just first say that I'm just shocked that we're even here talking about this, and how horrible this is going to look for us and hurt, um, the entire state. We're looking at a time when the right wing is attacking public funding, public schools, everything, saying that we're all overpaid and everything. We, this is the first year we're, we're, we're not suffering under huge cuts, and they are just waiting for the opportunity to find more, um, things they could use to say how overpaid people are, how we're wasting people's taxpayer money, and this will become a major thing that they will use that will hurt us for our long-term goal of having adequate funding for schools. And I want you to also think about the fact, I mean, you know, first of all, we should not be talking about markets. If anyone's here to make money, please get out of here. We're here for public education, to do a service to students and to the community, not to make money. You're in the wrong place. This is not a business, we should not be talking about markets. However, if you want to compare ourselves to other people, I mean, I think people's salaries do, um, reflect kind of a value that we give. Consider the fact that we have one out of four students in Portland that live in poverty. Do you want to say that you were that much more important than them and their families that are paying taxes? I think it's extremely embarrassing that we're even considering this, or the fact that I have to teach half-time, um, because of our new schedule that increases our workload, even though our class sizes are, um, reduced, when you get high school teachers to teach an extra class, that's a huge workload issue, and because of that, I actually have to beg to be able to teach half-time. They're trying to force me to teach five classes, and I can't handle that and do justice to my students. So, I'm making a half-time salary where I won't even get benefits for help, um, for dental or vision. I'm getting a root canal tomorrow, and I have to rush to get it done because, or else it'll be thousands of dollars out of my pocket, and I can't afford to do that. Do you really want to say that you are that much more important than me and everyone else, including our students and their families, that your salary should be that much higher? And also, I, I would even say, we shouldn't even have a percentage in, you know, if I got a two percent increase, two percent increase of my salary, just do some math, right? Look at the numbers. Two percent of that number compared to two percent of a hundred, almost two-hundred-thousand dollars is a huge difference. I'm curious, I mean, what do people do with that kind of money? I just don't know. I will show you what my personal budget is and how I live, and I live a modest life, I'm not here to get rich, and in fact, I'm taking a major salary cut, and I will maybe even do this permanently, um, and that will affect my retirement, not having dental and vision benefits for the rest of my life, and that's what I'm prepared to do to serve my students.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom Kane, K-A-N-E. Uh, I'm not here to evaluate the superintendent pro or con, it's really not in my capacity. Um, I admire her long-term commitment to Portland Public Schools. Um, I myself have been teaching for over twenty years, and no one had to offer me another eighty thousand dollars to do it. Um, but someone is responsible for hiring Yvonne Deckard at fifteen thousand dollars a month-
Woo! Oh, yeah!
-and spending three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars to get a contract that teachers likely would have settled without any participation from Ms. Deckard. So I sometimes imagine, uh, and I want to apologize for the nonlinear nature of this, uh, because this is a bit hasty, but I sometimes imagine I'm going to play the lottery, and if I win the lottery, I'll buy myself a new Tesla. And apparently, the superintendent won the lottery, because that's the kind of money we're talking about. It's a question of proportion. Teachers had to spend thousands of their own hours, their own time, including a twenty-four-hour bargaining session, so that we could eke out a two-point-three percent raise. We've had a five percent raise over the last five years. And what is it, what does this kind of a raise say to our district's parents, as Young pointed out, a quarter of whom are living below the poverty line, um, about our commitment to equity? These people, parent people who make two, who work two jobs to make ends meet. Um, I, I get it that the super, you're comparing the superintendent to other superintendents, um, but as far as I'm concerned, they're all overpaid as well. Um, so, again, I have a similar question to Young, what is it that someone can't afford at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year? And, um, finally, um, as a last note, if the superintendent would refer her bargaining negotiator to the union, we would greatly appreciate it. Thanks.
That's it? Great. Thank you very much to everyone for your testimony. Um, is there, is there any board discussion? So now we'll have board discussion on the contract, so, who would like to start?
I have a question.
Steve?
Sorry. Hi, this is not my discussion on that topic, I'll do that.
Okay.
I have a question on the presentation, because I'm talking all the time about proper board decorum and how we work. Well, somebody had to put together the presentation. Was that done by you personally? And then you asked the people to do the presentation for you in the school district to put together and do that, or did you do that and then tell them to put that together so you could show that up? I mean, can I do that? Can I?
Sure.
Because I can ask the people to put together a big presentation for me on some topic, and I can put it and play it.
So let me, let me answer your question. The, um-
I thought you said, I thought you said sure.
No. The, uh, what I did was put together all the information, and I asked staff to put it into PowerPoint, because I am not that computer savvy.
So I can do that, and I can do that, and I can put it in PowerPoint, and they'll put it in PowerPoint for me, and I can show that?
If it has something to do with the district, sure.
What we're doing. Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure we knew what we were doing. And then, I can give it before we do the, can I give that before we actually have a, a, uh, motion, a resolution? Can I just kind of do that? That was done before the resolution was made.
Yes, it was. So, in this case, um, because I was the one who was leading the negotiations with the superintendent, I wanted the public to be aware of all of the things that we had looked at, um, and the, the process that we went through, so I, it's almost like having a staff person, almost like a staff person, coming up and explaining, um, what the district went through and how we reached our decision. And I will have some comments to make as a board member also, so.
Okay, I'd just like to suggest that next time we have the resolution first, then we do the presentation, which is the proper order to do things. Okay, thank you.
Did you have comments on the contract?
Yeah, yeah. You want me to make those now?
Sure.
I'm supporting the position that, and, and I want to make sure that it's clear that this has nothing to do with any personal thing with the superintendent, who I have many times said I think's a very nice person and has treated me very well, and I appreciated that the whole time. I do think that we should be offering the superintendent the ideal, um, two-point-three percent that we gave teachers. I think that it's fair that we have pretty much every person in the district administrative and so forth fairly equal to that. I, and so that's the position that I'm supporting, and anything beyond that, I'm voting against. But, there's a, there's a reason for that also, and I just kind of want to state how I feel about it. I think if, if I was in the four count, because I think it was Matt Profit, the first time I heard this, said, as an old superintendent said, uh, "The most important thing for a superintendent is to be able to count to four." And I thought it was a pretty good statement, and he's, he was a pretty smart man, and I think that we have a superintendent who can clearly count to four. And I think I'm about number twenty-three on the count, but that's not, uh, the point. The point is that, then why, uh, yeah, I know you picked up on that, didn't you? That's good, that's good you got the, yeah, you guys' maths picking up up here. Uh, I grew up in a small, I grew up in a small town in Oregon, and in a small town in Oregon, we used to have fix-it guys, and they sometimes even had to name Mister Fix-It. And, so you would call if you had a problem with your refrigerator and it was leaking, you would call in Mister Fix-It Guy, and if you had problems, you had, you need your front steps fixed, you would call in Mister Fix-It Guys. Well, that's kind of how I believe we should be as a school district. We should have fix-it people out there. That's the job of the administration, to be the fix-it people. And so, you come in with a problem, and they fix that problem, actually fix the problem. And what I think's happened, and this is why I'm kind of a little non-supportive of some of the things that we do, corporations get the idea that they have fixers. They have people who come in who are fixers, they come in and they smooth over the problem, and they make it look better, and they do public relations for it. And they don't really fix the problems, they fix what it looks like. And I think we've become, to a huge degree, a district of fixers instead of fix-it people. And it's hard for me to support that, because you don't really get the problems taken care of. So, when you are, when you have graduation rates that you're trying to get up, I mean, that's a hard problem. A kid's in our system for twelve years. Theoretically, as you go through for twelve years, you should be able to, at the end, graduate from high school if you've got a good, good education. It, it's not something you fix in a year, it's not something you fix in two years. You fix it over twelve years, and you, that's how you fix it. But we have a tendency, instead of, instead of taking those graduation problems and making them work, we manipulate, we are manipulating them to some degree. Sure, sometimes it works, but basically, we're manipulating things. The fixers are manipulating things. It's the same, to a certain degree, you can do the same thing with testing. I, I begged the superintendent to have the testing committee, and said, please, the one that she promised that we would have, please have the testing committee, so we can actually get down and look and see what's happening in those schools. But instead, we're doing the fixer things. So we have all these fixer administrators instead of fix-it people, and that's where I'm having a hard trouble saying, okay, we have this success, let's kick it up, and let's, and we're having this great success. I don't see the great success, I see the fixer stuff, not to fix it. And so that's why I'm not overly supportive of this huge contract for the superintendent as much as I think she's a very nice person. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another board member? I should ask Ruth. Ruth, do you want to talk? Do you want to, do you want to go next? Okay. Let's see if I can, let's see how this works. Okay, go ahead.
Um, so, as one of three board members who helped hire Carol Smith back in two thousand and seven, um, I take my share of accountability for not insisting that she take regular, regular, um, salary increases over the last seven years, and had the board do, so we would not be in a position of needing to catch up, um, with this, with this large, kind of one-time, uh, increase. But, um, we do need to recognize the outstanding performance of Superintendent Smith, not just her universally acknowledged wonderful personal qualities, but her professional accomplishments and her truly outstanding leadership and performance for this district over the past seven years, um, as jam-reviewed, including the increase in our graduation rate and then the momentum that we're seeing in that direction, our nationally-recognized equity policy for charitable stewardship of public dollars during state budget cuts over the last several years, passage of the capital bond, and of watching levy, and on and on. Um, and we do need to be in the market range for a district of our size. Uh, like it or not, urban school superintendents are in a highly competitive, uh, extremely high stakes, high pressure, and therefore highly compensated position. That's just the reality we live in and in our world. Um, so, we, uh, we need to, we need to accommodate her according to her performance and in line with similar districts, similar school districts. And really, for me, most importantly, we, we have, we must not underestimate the huge, huge value to our district, and really the entire community, to have the long-term leadership of Carol's caliber. In other words, the seven years, every additional year, um, really adds exponentially, when you don't have the churn and the chaos that comes with constant superintendent turnover. We've been very, very fortunate here in Portland to have her long-term stay in leadership, and that is of incalculable value. So, I appreciate, um, Coach Arnold's, um, long work in researching and negotiating and working through this to come to this final package. Obviously, I deeply appreciate Carol's leadership and hope she'll be with the district for many years to come, and I'm supporting the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Director Regan?
So, when Superintendent Carol Smith was first hired seven years ago, she was given a salary that was less than the former superintendent and less than market comparables, because she lacked two key ingredients: experience as a superintendent and experience running a large and complex urban school district. Seven years later, the superintendent resume now includes these key ingredients, yet her salary is essentially the same, so an adjustment is warranted. As we started this process, I had two priorities. The first was to get our superintendent's salary to a point that is market-competitive, and the second was to ensure that the superintendent's contract remains simple and transparent: no hidden payouts, no add-ons. So how you define market competition is important. Comparisons to Seattle and California are interesting, but to me, not- So how you define market competition is important. Comparisons to Seattle and California are interesting, but to me, not necessarily appropriate as Portland is a very different market. Comparing Portland to Beaverton or Salem is not apples to apples either. We are the only urban school district in the state. Our student demographics are challenging in unique ways. Our cost of living is higher. We have a strong and engaged business community and unique partnership opportunities, and we are the media hub for the state. So for market comparables, I looked at several different factors. First, what do superintendents in comparatively sized urban districts make? And for districts with thirty to sixty thousand students, the range is anywhere between two hundred and twenty-four thousand and three hundred thousand. Second, what do urban superintendents with five or more years' experience make? The average is two hundred and forty-seven. Male superintendents, of course, make more. Female superintendents make less. That's a sad statement, but it is the reality. So male superintendents with five years' experience on average make two hundred and fifty-seven. Female superintendents on average make two hundred and thirty-eight. Third, I looked at the raises that Portland Public School teachers have gotten during the same year, the seven-year timeframe. That analysis is interesting. If Superintendent Smith had made the raises or cost of living increases that teachers got without seniority steps, her salary would be about two hundred and ten thousand. If she had received the same raises as teachers get during the first thirteen years of service, meaning cost of living increase plus steps, her salary would be closer to two hundred and fifty thousand. So finally, if Superintendent Smith had received a raise of three point five percent for each of the past seven years, her salary would be about two hundred and forty-five thousand. So looking at all of these factors, it's reasonable that the superintendent's salary should be in the mid-two forties somewhere, um, which is a significant increase, and I acknowledge that. Um, but it's likely where we would need to be if we were out in the market today recruiting for a new superintendent. So a clean and transparent contract is actually a higher priority for me than the raise itself. When I was elected to the Portland School Board in two thousand and three, we made several intentional changes to our administrative contracts. The board before us had done two six-figure contract buyouts, one for a former superintendent and one for an assistant superintendent. We had to do a third. The community was outraged and we were mortified. So we changed our policies and practices to assure this didn't happen again. And in fact, the legislature responding to this passed a bill to ensure that districts were not allowed to pay employees for time they don't actually work. So since that time, we have no golden parachutes or bonuses or other extras in our administrative contracts, no housing allowances, no cars. We have no special health insurance payouts. And in fact, our senior administrators receive the exact same health insurance as all of our other administrators. So as we started this discussion, I wanted to be sure that we didn't lock future school boards into overly generous contract terms or raises they would have to pay out. I specifically wanted to be sure we were never again in a situation where we might have to do a six-figure contract buyout. Our current superintendent contract today includes salary and an annuity. Otherwise, it is a clean and transparent contract. I'm pleased that after prolonged negotiations, the contract we're voting on today also includes salary and annuity with no extras hidden within. If we hadn't gotten there, my colleagues knew that I would be a no vote. And while the salary we're offering is higher than I'd like, it's in the ballpark of where I believe we need to be to be market competitive. So my vote today is based on where we should be in the market and where we would need to be if we were launching a superintendent search tomorrow. But I would like to take the opportunity to comment a little bit on the superintendent's performance. During the superintendent's seven years, we have dealt with significant annual budget cuts that have hampered our ability to invest fully where we need to invest. Yet even in these times, we have significantly increased language immersion opportunities. Every Portland Public School now has counseling support for students. We have summer intervention sessions targeted to students needing extra support or those in key transitional periods. We started a successful middle college program at Jefferson High School. We're finalizing turf fields at all of our high schools. We rebuilt Marysville School after a tragic fire. We converted all of our furnaces to natural gas, saving millions of dollars in utilities. And we significantly increased professional development around cultural competency. In addition, we successfully passed a local teacher levy in two thousand and eleven with our, two thousand and eleven with our current levy paying for about six hundred teaching positions. We passed a nearly five hundred million dollar facilities bond in two thousand and twelve, allowing us to start the much-needed renovation of our schools, starting with three high schools plus seismic roof accessibility and science lab upgrades. And we settled a highly contentious teacher contract in a way that supports both students and staff, adding a hundred and eighty teachers and lowering our student-teacher ratio, adding two days to our school calendar, and allowing us, at long last, to get out early in the market to hire the best and the brightest new teacher talent each year. In a previous contract negotiation, we fully revised our teacher evaluation process. Most importantly, we're seeing a steady increase in our graduation rate, up fourteen points in the last four years. So is there more to do? Absolutely. Our graduation rate is still a hair lower than the state average and way lower than what any of us would view as accessible, as acceptable. We're still working to provide a full class schedule and to meet minimum instructional hours for our high school students. Our administrative support for school principals must be beefed up. We're in the process of improving our parent complaint process, which has left too many caring parents in bureaucratic limbo. We continue to work on strategies to address our unacceptable achievement gap between white students and students of color, although we are making progress. We need to continue to strengthen our partnerships with labor and trades, especially to support career technical education opportunities for our students. And our relationship with Portland Association of Teachers must evolve into a healthier partnership generally. So my vote today should not be interpreted as a statement that all is well. It is a statement, however, that says we're making steady progress. We should be paying our superintendent a competitive salary. And we have urgent work to do to better support our students, staff, and families.
I'll be a yes vote. John?
Thank you. Um, I only have a few comments. Uh, but I, I think generally, hiring and retaining a superintendent is probably one of the most challenging and also most public, uh, things that a, and responsibilities that a board has. Uh, I think, uh, the Oregon Educational Investment Board, for example, learned their lesson when they hired Rudy Crew, is to see how difficult it is to, to bring in a quality, uh, education leader. I think, uh, you have an opportunity to invest in rhetoric, or you have an opportunity to invest in stability. And I, I think the stability that Superintendent Smith has offered this district over a number of years uh, is too important of a commodity for us to sacrifice. And, uh, and I will be a yes vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Sure. Um, okay, I have a couple of comments, uh, to make, uh, starting with process. Uh, we had about, um, I don't know, somebody can, Greg, you probably have counted. Uh, but twelve, fourteen, fifteen, twenty executive sessions, um, when we were dealing with the contract for the labor, uh, for our teachers. Um, I thought it was important as a board to have an executive session to discuss, uh, the employment contract of our superintendent. And, um, I was told by the chairs that, no, that was not legal. I then asked an opinion of our attorney, who, um, said, no, that's not appropriate. And it, it just defies, for me, it just defied common sense. Had I been the chairs, I probably would have just called an executive session regardless of the, of the legal advice. But, um, what I would, what I'd like to do, um, and our, our attorney suggested there might be a way of running this up the flagpole. Um, I'd like to do that because in the future, um, we ought to have, and I know it would save you a lot of time, Pam. You did an amazing amount of work on this. Uh, and so I wanted to thank you for that. Uh, calling people, emailing, and, you know, and then you'd get into the phone tag and he says, she says, um, it's just, it's a lot of work um, in terms of a, uh, doing things correctly. I think, I think we ought to have an executive session uh, when we talk about the employment of our superintendent. So, um, so I, I plan to follow through and counselor, if you could help, what the next steps are on that. But I think we need to get clarity on that. Second, uh, to me, this isn't, it, it's a, it's an easy vote. I'm going to vote no. Um, and it's, uh, and it's an easy vote for this reason is, as, as board members, we have lots of different constituents. And, um, all the way from, you know, the kids, to the parents, to the teachers, to each other, um, and to the taxpayer. And every decision we make, one or one of those constituents, I mean, it might be more appropriate. And this is a decision today where, uh, I think as a board, we, uh, the foremost in front of my mind is constituent as a taxpayer, is, uh, what, as, what kind of contract can we negotiate that is, uh, that is both fair to our superintendent, but also is fair to the taxpayer? Um, and is the best deal that we can get. And I, I feel like we didn't, um, that this deal doesn't represent the best deal that we can negotiate on behalf of our taxpayers. I want to acknowledge, Carol, you not taking raises. Uh, I want to acknowledge your, your good work and your longevity and your leadership. I think that this, uh, that the, the proposed increase is just, is just too big. And, you know, we're in that, we're in this, that situation. But it's just, it's, it's too big of an increase, given where we're at. And, um, and I, I don't think it's appropriate to, um, it's certainly a valid methodology and everybody and their mother's uncle uses it to go out and look at, you know, different cities and, uh, and what everybody else is paying. And what, as, from a taxpayer's standpoint, what that happens is, is it's just a spiral on up. And it's a, it's a chase to who can be the highest. And I don't, I don't think we need, I don't think we need to do that. I think here in Oregon, uh, you know, we're constantly voted one of the best states, one of the best cities to come to. Um, and that has value. That has monetary value. So I don't, I don't buy going out and comparing us to other, uh, other cities across the country. I do think it's important that, um, that we are, that we have a relative pay scale towards other Oregon districts. And so Bobby and I appreciate also your work in this whole negotiations and, as you said, to make it totally clear and easy and, and transparent. Um, but I disagree with you on the, and, and others. I mean, I, I actually think Beaverton, Salem, um, are rel, are relative districts that we can compare ourselves to. We're about twenty percent larger. They, um, pretty similar demographics uh, in terms of free and reduced lunch. Uh, and so in my mind, where I, where my, it was an easy vote to say yes to a twenty percent uh, compared to, um, the, the second largest district that we're twenty percent bigger of. But, um, so moving forward, I, I hope we can have, uh, executive sessions when we talk about this, as well as talking about it in the public. Um, and I'll be voting no today.
So I don't have anything eloquent prepared, um, but just a couple of thoughts, so people understand my thought process going through this. One, um, if the superintendent was underperforming, um, then I wouldn't be considering this. But she's, um, been performing it. And as people have pointed out, um, we have been making steady, consistent growth, which is actually better than spiked and dropping, dropping growth. Because, um, as happens in testing, big spikes, large spikes usually indicate some anomaly. And that's not what we've been doing. We've been growing steadily. Um, I appreciate the, the public comment about be careful about markets, right? Because people shouldn't be in this business for, for money. As a nonprofit employee, I just want to let you know that our, um, our industry, our sector also goes through market rate adjustments, knowing that nobody is in nonprofit work for, or few people are in nonprofit work.
I'll move it over there, Ruth.
Sorry, phone technicality. Market rate adjustment is just looking at other people doing the work and seeing whether or not you're compensated adequately or similarly. Um, and unlike Director Curler's experience where it's a spiral up, I've been part of many adjustments where actually things have gone down, depending on what the market is at a, at a time. And so, um, I think it's reasonable for any industry, any business, any organization that's looking at keeping and retaining people, um, to do market rate adjustments. And, um, as I think about the priorities that I've seen come from this board, um, when we were in contract negotiations with all of our partners, our consistent philosophy was, um, we want to hire great people. We want to keep good people. And we want to be able to compensate them, to keep them around. And we want parity because there isn't, the custodian is not necessarily more important than the teacher, is not necessarily more important than the superintendent. All of these people have functions and they affect our kids and how we move. And they're all important. So it's important that we do consider it in the context of our system. And you've seen graphics that while, if you look at the actual increase in a one-time, it is an extraordinary amount, yes. But it is because it has been artificially depressed, partly because of state funding over the past seven years. And again, to Superintendent Smith's, um, credit, she has not been willing to take that, understanding the sacrifices that everybody has been making. At the same time, what that does is with superintendent's salary pegged at a certain amount, it affects the rest of the organization. Meaning we cannot raise somebody below her to a competitive level or the person below them. At some point, they wind up, um, bumping into each other. And we begin losing people to either states or other districts because we cannot hire the type of quality people that we want. So if I think of various positions in our organization, whether it's our executive level, they're not all education positions. Some of them are transferable, financial people, human relations people, whatever the case may be. Folks have the choice of going to city, have the choice to going to county, have the choice to going to large private organizations. Now, we can sit as a philosophy and say, well, if that's what they're here for, then we don't want them. The reality is people doing the same exact job will look at what their options are. And just like all of us that are trying to make ends meet and trying to figure out how to be the best for our family, they may or will make other choices. So it's important that we be aware of it, not that we chase it, but that we be aware of it. So I'll be voting yes for this, um, understanding that for me, this large of an increase is a one-time thing. And I will be, um, even in next years, depending on what the budget is, advocating for the superintendent to continue to take those regular step increases, whether it's two point three, whatever it is, so that in another five years, we don't find ourselves having to do this large of an adjustment.
Anybody else? Any more comments? Ruth, any more comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, I think most of the, my, um, mostly what I thought about while I was trying to come to this decision was included in the PowerPoint that we had earlier. Um, but I do want to say, uh, that I value very much the work that Superintendent Smith has done for us over the past seven years. And particularly the things that we can see so easily, the increase in our graduation rate, the narrowing of our achievement gap, passing of a bond, passing of a levy, putting more money into schools, putting more teachers into schools, um, our equity policy. These are all things that, that make Portland Public Schools the great district that it is. Um, and I think that it's her longevity and her willingness to stick with it through really tough times. These have been really tough budget times in, in Oregon. Her longevity and her laser-like focus on making sure that our students achieve, uh, all students achieve, not, not just those who always will, but all students achieve, to me, has been, uh, a tremendous benefit for this district. And I really do appreciate it. And I, I also want to comment briefly on the fact that we do want to hire and retain, uh, the best people we possibly can. I think Greg said it very well. Uh, because the upheaval that's caused by people coming and going, like Portland Public School suffers- going, like Portland Public School suffered through for many, many years, those of you in the audience probably remember, every two years, a new superintendent. It's very difficult, and is why, one of the reasons why the district was in the state that it was in when Carol came on board. And so I want to thank her again for her longevity and for her laser-like focus on making sure all of our students achieve, and I'm also a yes vote. So the board will now vote on Resolution Number 4949. All in favor, please?
All in favor, please.
Oh, voice vote, okay. All those in favor, Ms. Hewson, will you call the roll?
Director Atkins?
Yes.
And I believe Director Atkins can vote, but it's, I'm not going to make a big deal out of it, but let's check out, we should check that, because we'd be going from, if it's not in our policy, we'd be going for Robert Rule's order, and I don't think in the Robert Rule's she can vote. There is, it's either our policy or they're one or the other, but it's, I won't make a big stink out of it, because there's obviously already four votes to pass it, so, but let's check and make sure next time.
Thank you, Steve.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, we'll look into that. Ms. Hewson?
Director Belau?
Yes.
Director Regan?
Yes.
Director Buell?
No.
Director Morton?
Yes.
Director Curler?
No.
And Chair Knowles?
Yes. Okay, Resolution 4949 is approved by a vote of?
Five to two.
Five to two. Thank you very much, everybody.
So Pam, can I just say?
Carol, you, of course you can.
So, number one, I just want to express appreciation to the board for the amount of research and due diligence of what was really a complex set of considerations in figuring out what was, both how we're bringing our whole system into market, including the superintendent's salary, and all of the other factors that you weighed and voices that you listened to in arriving at what came forward today. And it was over a series of months, so this was clearly not a straightforward process as people understood, and other factors got raised by members who came and testified today. But my appreciation for you, for the thoughtful work that you did to get to what we got to today, and then just my, both feeling like we've got a strong foundation that we're building from right now, and I'm really excited about what we have in front of us, and I appreciate looking at another three years. We've got really clear focus on the things that we are working to accomplish for kids in the next three years, and I look forward to doing that with all of you. So I'll just say, I'm excited about the go-forward and building on our momentum.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move forward with our business agenda. The board now consider remaining items on the business agenda, having already voted on Resolution 4949. Ms. Hewson, are there any changes to the business agenda?
There is not.
There are not. Do I have a, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Director Morton moves, and Director Regan seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Hewson, do we have public comment?
No, we don't.
We don't. Is there any board discussion on the business agenda? Director Buell?
It'd be nice to have a, some sort of a report from the superintendent on what's taking place with these legal matters that keep coming forward, and we keep giving people money. And so it just seems, I don't mean now, but I mean, it'd be nice to have some sort of discussion, because there's a lot of discussion out, like, we keep giving people money, although we do, based on, obviously, we're making errors, or maybe we're just giving them money because we're not making errors. I can't figure it all out, so I'd love to have some edification around, how come we keep giving all these people money? Are we making mistakes out there of some sort that we could correct or something? It's not a lot of money, it's 170,000 or something. That's, you know, that's a chunk, yeah, that's a couple, that's four of my halftime librarians in the elementary schools that we're handing to people because we're making some sort of mistakes. So I don't know exactly how it works, but I'd love to know what's taking place.
We can prepare some kind of a review for you, Steve.
That's nice, thank you.
Great. Any other comments? Director Belau?
I just, I just want a clarification, so I understand. So when I saw these on the agenda, it also was accompanied by our attorney saying that she is willing to go through those and discuss the situations in each of those with any of us, that apparently isn't to your satisfaction.
There's a pattern, it's happened over a period of time, and so the individual ones are, so suppose they say, well, we did this and made a mistake here. Is that part of a pattern? Can we correct that in some way by the superintendent taking some action so we don't end up paying this money out? That's what I'm interested in, is looking at it as a pattern, not as just individual things.
And the offer of sitting down for those so that you could discern a pattern potentially isn't, doesn't suffice?
Yeah, I could sit down with people, they're welcome. I have a nice little area out there by my condo, they could come and sit right on the deck, and we can talk about it. That would be great.
How bad has possibilities? Okay, any other discussion on the business agenda? Okay, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The, excuse me, the business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero. The next meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, August 12, 2014, and this meeting is adjourned. That meeting on August 12 is at, is that going to be at six? At 6 o'clock. Thank you.